How to react to type first? The largest.
Um, six o'clock or a little bit after, sorry. Ooh, live mic. Pursuant to section eighty-four fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we have, oh, rule call, please.
Almonza.
Present.
Erdnberger.
Present.
Paul.
Here.
Holman.
Present.
Crackey. Magnusson. Smith.
Here.
Snipes.
Here.
Healan.
Here.
Devon, present.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, we don't apparently have any public comment request forms, so we will move right into our new and miscellaneous business. And we only have one item, which is an information item, a workshop regarding professional learning alignment. And, uh, Dr. Chisholm is going to kick it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, and members of the board. On behalf of Mr. Ray, we appreciate your time tonight. Through the past two school years, board workshops have taken a deeper look at our united focus on continuous improvement. Since August, the work has aligned with our moonshot goal, all students reading on grade level by twenty thirty. Our topics over the years have included evidence of improvement through assessments in September twenty twenty-three. Then in October, we moved on to Strategic Plan of Action Updates. January twenty twenty-four, we talked about the learning framework and the Elliot Tool. In June of twenty twenty-four, we looked at evidence of effective schools as we moved into our systems accreditation. October twenty twenty-four, we talked about implementation of structured literacy as it was connected to our moonshot. Moved into December, looking at evidence of engagement. And then in January, this past January, we talked about the role of school support teams and the improvement process. As Mr. Ray has shared throughout the year, it's all connected. How we teach literacy, how we gather and respond to data about student experiences and growth, and how we equip adults to act on that information. Tonight's workshop shows another step. Our professional learning supports our alignment, improvement efforts, and ultimately better outcomes for all of our students. In June, we will come back together for a culminating reflection on our strategic plan of action. And with that, I will turn it over to our professional learning team and our Chief School Improvement Officer, Suzanne Kramer, to begin tonight's presentation.
Good evening, President Erdnberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and to my colleagues here from OPS. Tonight, members of the Office of Professional Learning will share our progress toward aligned adult learning, communication, and registration for a professional learning system. For one hundred and seventy years, OPS has been providing learning and training to its employees. We have now undertaken the process of digging into and implementing practice for how adults learn best and how this learning should be applied to our work each and every day. The work of this, that this team will share is built on a foundation laid by Dr. Chisholm, so we're really grateful for her leadership and vision. Our moonshot requires more than basic staff development. It demands a fundamental shift in belief, action, and alignment at every level of our system. Our vision also includes that we are able to see through lines in all of our professional learning offerings so that we're able to get to our moonshot. I want to take a moment to situate our conversation in the organizational elements of improvement. We've shared this slide with you before and used it many times throughout some of our moonshot meetings. We know that these five essential supports for improvement will need to get better in order for us to reach our key outcome, which is all students reading on grade level. Tonight, we zoom into only element three and the progress we've made over the last couple of years and the next steps for our team. In June of twenty twenty-four, we shared that we were candidates for system accreditation. At our last board meeting, Mr. Ray shared that the Omaha Public Schools will receive systems accreditation, pending the formal meeting by the Cognia Global Commission in June. We've also shared this slide with you before. Leadership, engagement, growth, and a culture of learning are all driven by systemic quality professional learning from onboarding to retirement. Now, Latasha, Alex, and Chris will take you deeper into their work. You have a copy of this evening's presentation along with some important artifacts that our team will share as we go through the presentation.
Um, a learning district. We definitely are a learning district. Learning is, this would, this has allowed us an opportunity to design and implement a district-wide professional learning system that incorporates evidence-based delivery methods for adult learners, all while utilizing Canvas to have a systematic approach for communication as well as registration. Over the years, our work has really evolved significantly. We began focusing solely on staff development. However, in twenty twenty, we had the opportunity to expand our efforts to include a strong emphasis on leadership development, recognizing the critical role that leaders play in sustaining educational excellence. From there, we developed a comprehensive professional learning framework, and it was centered around four key areas. Those areas were district-level supports, grow-your-own-programming, oh, grow-your-own-program, excuse me, staff inductions, and our professional development. These shifts represent one-time learnings to the aligned, continuous learning opportunities for all staff that we have currently in their roles and in their different career stages in their lives. In August of twenty twenty-three, we formed a cross-departmental professional learning work group, which represented all aspects of our district. The work group was comprised of teachers, principals, representatives from talent services, information management systems, our district operations, curriculum, school improvement. We also had the pleasure of having our OEA president, Kathy Polling, be part of our collaboration work group as well. The goal was to collaboratively design a district-wide professional learning system that aligns with the OPS priorities and our moonshot of being all students reading on grade level by twenty thirty. As a work group, we have, were able to implement a comprehensive professional learning system that, like Mrs. Kramer said, incorporated evidence-based practices, used our systematic approach for registration in our communications, which we will get into at a later time with Dr. Shaven and Alex. We grounded all of this work in five evidence-based principles of learning. This allowed us to create a high-quality, purposeful, and transformative capacity for all teachers to help with our student success. The first one that I would like to introduce would be our transformative learning and change management. What that is in essence is being able to know that we have to shift the way we're learning and the way we teach. There's nothing wrong with change. Reflection and feedback, that gives us the opportunity to deepen our learning experiences all while we're supporting our continuous growth. Collaborative participation is what you were able to see, how we formed a work group to share collaboration and understanding and make that responsibility for everyone. Equity, which is just making sure that we all have all the supports that we need to be successful. And last but not least, which will, our learning designs, which will be introduced by Dr. Shaven when he talks about our facilitator network development. And that is high-quality learning experiences that are intentional, designed using our best practices for adult learners, which creates active engagement, modeling, as well as application. Now, by using these guided principles, we are creating a system where learning is ongoing, personalized, and aligned, empowering all educators to learn as well as grow.
Thank you, Latasha. I'd like to take a moment, have you go into your purple folders, if you haven't already. What Latasha just described to you is one of the first handouts on the left side of that folder. So you see transformative, transformative learning and change management at the top. Give you just a moment, let, let that sink in, the words that Latasha just gave us about the guiding principles, and we'll just take a look at that handout. Yep. Yep, that's the one. Thank you, Jane. So we're using these guiding principles in aligning all the professional learning, a phased approach to, to reach our moonshot. For more context, last year, district professional learning was all provided via Canvas. Our next step is to work with each department, district operations, to talent services, to all of the departments under this umbrella. We utilize these guiding principles, and thank you again, Latasha, for sharing those, as we work across departments, a phased approach. In addition, our cross-departmental work also includes alignment and migration processes. To begin, we start with a kickoff meeting. We'll get to a little bit more on that in just a moment. Uh, but in these kickoff meetings, I'll go there now, sorry. The focus is on discovery alignment, where, discovery and alignment, where we seek to understand who the, who the department is currently serving and how they serve the staff in terms of professional learning. We use what we learn to inform our migration processes and opportunities across all departments. We also use a streamlined process as we work. One example of a streamlined process for, is, for this is the submission of professional learning offerings. In your packet, the purple folder, you also had a really long handout. That long handout is one example, a very small example of the work that's happening. So as we worked with, uh, with departments, we found out we needed to have a streamlined process. And that process is highlighted for you on that graphic. And we'll give you just a moment to look through that. You should be able to see clear steps for submitting the professional learning as well as a professional feedback loop that's built in for continuous improvement. That's right at the end. Let's also take a look at the timeline of our work. Sorry to have you keep going back to that folder, but we're gonna grab one more artifact, if you will. The artifact looks like what's pictured at the bottom of the screen here at the top of your, of your handout. As you look down through that timeline, you can see how we are taking that phased approach and working across our district. One of the items that was already mentioned is the facilitator development network. And this is where we work with the people who are delivering professional learning with those guiding principles we talked about earlier. That facilitator development net, network is, is noted as FDN. And you can see that as you go across that timeline, how we work with FDN, facilitator development network, with different departments. This, this next slide shows a little bit more about that initial discovery and alignment portion of the kickoff meeting. In fact, this is a, the photo at, at the top there is, is our work with one of the departments we worked with earlier this semester. The slide is also one from our discovering alignment. That's where we're seeking to understand the professional learning that's happening within each of the departments and then how we can look for alignment. You can also see in the timeline that we started with curriculum and instruct, uh, curriculum instruction support, as noted by CIS, and student community services this semester. You can also see that we will continue to work across all departments to create alignment in our system. I mentioned that we're looking for opportunities of alignment. One example that we found already is that we need to provide just-in-time learning opportunities so that staff have what they need to do to do the right work. We offer a lot of professional learning, and there's a continuum of these offerings ranging from, for example, how to safely store chemicals in your science classroom, all the way to deep understandings of school improvement, like we have with our principal institute. In my first example, time for professional learning is not always aligned with when you, when you need it, right? So I might get the, for example, training on how to place chemicals in August, but I might not get the shipment until February. I need to go back to, and that's where Canvas steps in and just in time. So I, I have a repository I can go back to in, in some cases, but that's not all that's in Canvas. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. But one example here, the other example I mentioned, the principal institute. Last, uh, last summer, we had a principal institute, and the principals contacted our office saying, can we please keep that Canvas course open? They had a face-to-face meeting. They had a great conference put on by members of, of the staff here before I even got here. And, uh, the learning, they felt so, so, was so important that they wanted to keep that course open, that they could go back to it. And that was from our principals. So, uh, considering this as well as professional learning is driving school improvement, such as principal institute, these examples make sure that we can go back to the professional learning when it's needed. So that's that just-in-time learning. Alex is gonna show us how Canvas is used to streamline and improve professional learning a little bit later. Right now, I'm just highlighting the offerings, a continuum, that there's a continuum offerings in professional learning as we work with each department. This engagement with each department leads to eventually a five, three, and one-year plan to get us to the moonshot with professional learning. Long-range planning, so this is the last handout. Last time, we'll send you back to the, uh, the purple folder. This is an example of one that you might be familiar with, starting last August. This board organized its learning in a one-year plan, and this is that plan. Uh, so just, we wanted to provide an example for some context of what we're looking to, to find and help each department find an alignment in five, three, and one-year plans. Another portion of our work includes migration, migrating the professional learning opportunities into Canvas, which we're, which we are now using to register and deliver professional learning. Alex is going to share some of that with us now.
Thank you, Dr. Shaven. As Dr. Shaven stated, we are in the process of moving all professional learning offerings into our Canvas learning management system. So Canvas is a system that we utilize to host professional learning experiences across the district. It also allows all Omaha Public School, School staff to register for these learning experiences and, and then granting them immediate access to the learning. Um, a few benefits I wanted to highlight with this, uh, process of moving all of our professional learning into Canvas. The first one is it's a single place for all staff to locate, register, and then access the professional learning experiences across the district. Canvas also has built-in tools to assist with creating engaging professional learning for our staff, um, for in-person experiences, online experiences, and also blended experiences. So it, it provides opportunities to kind of do a mix of all three. And then the last benefit I wanted to highlight is that it also keeps track of important registration data, uh, such as enrollment counts to better capture staff professional learning. For example, if we have toy sessions, they're able to kind of, we're able to see, you know, what type of sessions our, our staff kind of gravitate to during these professional learning experiences. Now, I'm gonna show you all a few examples, uh, some snapshots of the current professional learning events and opportunities that we're utilizing Canvas for just this academic year. So the first one I would like to show you all is this is the registration site for our instructional coaching that we did, where instructional leaders from elementary to middle and high school instructional leaders came to the site to register for sessions. They got to pick and choose, uh, locations and times to enhance their instructional coaching. Similar to the instructional coaching, uh, registration experience, we also provided all staff during our February fourteenth District Professional Learning Day. We created a registration site for them as well. We had over six thousand staff across the district, with, like, teachers, counselors, school psychologists, paraprofessionals, uh, come to the site to register for their sessions that they were going to interact with for, throughout the day. After they register, they then gain immediate access to their learning experience inside of Canvas. This one in particular is for the paraprofessionals when we conducted our two-hour late starts during improvement days. We had over seven hundred paraprofessionals interact with various learning opportunities in this course throughout their two-hour late start days. Uh, connecting back to what Dr. Shaven stated earlier about the principal institute. So we provided all principals access to like a landing webpage-style, info site inside of Canvas that provided like a conference-style experience for them that supplemented the in-person, week-long event that they were interacting with, um, various sessions and learning experiences. They were able to find information that they needed for the institute. They were able to interact with activities that we developed directly into the Canvas course. And then also, um, throughout the year, we left it open. So they were able to go back and reference those learning experiences and those resources and materials that they interacted with during the week. Now, let's take a live look at the Paraprofessional Improvement Days course. So one of those snapshots that we took a look, take a look at. I'm gonna back out here and...
While Alex pulls that up, apologies. I just wanna kind of zoom out to something that Latasha shared about where we were with professional learning and where we're trying to go, that slide previously. So in the past, um, we may have had a single professional learning on a topic, or, um, someone may have had to email participants to tell them what was being offered by role group by role group or department by department. And so really, part of this work is, um, ensuring that we have an understanding of what the critical learning is to reach our moonshot for all role groups, whether you're a nutrition services worker, a teacher, a paraprofessional, a leader in our district, whatever your role is, we have the right learning for you, ongoing, in that continuum of options, and just in time, like the example that Chris mentioned about the science chemicals, for you to be able to do your best work. And that then has the successful registration system that delivers on those guiding principles that you received around blended, online, and in-person learning. Uh, so we're navigating, um, then also, how do leadership development, uh, processes and continuums plug into that? So, again, from onboarding to retirement, we have learning and development that supports us in reaching our moonshot and, um, supports the retention of high-quality staff who are the leaders of tomorrow, right, in our district? So I just wanted to zoom out for a second to kind of share that overarching systems vision of where we want to head to. Um, and then Alex will kind of take a deeper dive into this opportunity we created for paraprofessionals that Latasha has led over this last year.
Thank you for that. Um, so this is the Paraprofessional Improvement Day, like, experience that they interacted with throughout this academic year. So every improvement day, um, they would come to this, uh, course. They would, uh, be introduced to kind of a welcome. They would have contact information, uh, for us just in case if they had any questions. We did have dates and times listed for them just so they were aware of what was upcoming. It is, of course, ended in April, so we just left it with a thank you. It is, of course, ended in April, so we just left it with a thank you for your participation because this course is live still, so they're able to go back and re-interact with the learning. Then when they were ready to interact with the learning, they would click on the button here. It would then take them to their, their modules for their learning experience. This one in particular was more of an online professional learning opportunity for these improvement days. And so they were structured here where they were, they had the topic, they had the data of which the late start was interacted with. They would then start here, but have a little bit of an introduction of kind of what the content is going to be for that improvement day. We had some learning goals and then we had an agenda for them, kind of outlining what they're going to be interacting with and what they're going to be experiencing for the late start. They were then able to interact with a video and they were, they would watch it and be able to go back. After they experienced the video and the content, they would then answer some reflective questions. So these were more focused not on, hey, multiple choice, what, what was this, A, B, or C? It was more open-ended on connection to the content, to their actual role and how they could utilize the content in a manner of based on kind of what they're doing within the building. And this was just one example. Some of the other module examples had discussion boards where they were able to respond to each other and further deepen their learning by interacting with their peers. And then when they were completed, we would then go back into this and then mark them complete and then we'd be able to provide some feedback to them as well. Now I'm gonna back to Shaven.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, team. Go all the way back if, if that's, if that's desired. As he navigates to there, I can give you the words. We are a learning district. The professional learning focus from our work group included adult learning, communication, and registration. Those were the directives they told us to get busy figuring out. As we continue to build the learning culture where we have everyone rowing in the same direction, so to speak, these are our three key takeaways. We want alignment of professional learning that is necessary to reach our moonshot. Guiding principles to help set our guardrails and Canvas is a tool to help streamline and improve our professional learning. Thank you, and we were happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, Dr. Holman?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Could you hear me though, what I said? Okay, thank you. So my first question is, when the sessions are uploaded onto Canvas, are they forever available for staff members of you? Or then they, are they archived after a certain amount of time and then can be accessed still?
Yes. It depends on the, it depends on the type of learning, right? And so like the science chemical example is a, is a good one that you, you really want to be able to come back to that so we can keep our students safe and I don't need to try to find that in the folder somewhere. I have that learning, whatever artifacts that were developed with that is there. The principal institute is another good example of coming back to it. We are looking to set up our professional learning calendar in a summer, fall, spring-type situation where we know we're gonna have some crossover, but that's where it starts. And then how long we keep it open is to be determined by how long it needs to be open.
And then my next question is, I'm assuming at this point, all of the professional learning is presented and conducted by OPS staff? Or are there opportunities or are there other external organizations, people who are in alignment with our goals toward the moonshot? They, will they provide professional learning or is it just basically in-house right now?
No, we have a variety of professional learning offerings. But even, let's take an example, like maybe we have a keynote or something at a principal institute. Even though that's an external person, we still want to put that learning into the registration process, which registration is Canvas catalog. We also want to grab any artifacts from that presentation so that people can come back to it. Canvas to bring that. So even if we have an external partner who is not using Canvas, we would still put the learning together in a way that supplements, as Alex said, the learning that they receive in person.
And then, I mean, I've been gone from the district for a very long time, but like way back in the day, we used to have a certain amount of professional development hours that we had to get. Is that still something that is required for OPS staff?
Good to Latasha. I started at one.
We do have a certain amount of hours that are allotted, but once we start doing our, our long-range planning, we incorporate and embed all of those hours for all of our classified staff as well as certificate staff.
And then my last question, I think. So on the slide Alex actually showed with, for the paraprofessionals, they had a quiz for that particular professional learning opportunity. And you mentioned that there's feedback that's provided. Is the feedback provided for all of the staff who take the quizzes or engage in the discussion boards? Or is it kind of like a random situation?
We provide feedback for all when we go through. It's just part of our process. Well, for that speaking behalf on the improvement days in particular, we, there's feedback mechanisms that are built into Canvas that makes it a little bit more streamlined and efficient, especially with capacity of, of staff.
Just out of curiosity, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Just to add to that, I wanted to share as well that trying to ensure that all of this job-embedded time that Latasha shared from articulation day to improvement days to district professional learning, that they're not seen always as separate buckets, right? But if we have that arc of learning or that long-term plan, that what the, the leaders are learning at principal institute is carried into their professional learning meetings across the year. And then those tools or protocols that they might be learning about then come back as they're planning their improvement day work. We may teach them how to use the protocol on articulation day, right? So we're trying to see this time as continuous learning. And then one example on the feedback front is we did have folks upload their improvement day agendas. And for the first one and the third one, we did give written descriptive feedback to every principal. Said, oh, maybe you might think about adjusting this. We see this connection to your school improvement plan. So we, I believe every school leader has had feedback on those agendas at least one time this year.
And then finally, just out of curiosity, what happens if a staff member was unable to participate in the professional learning and unable to engage in the quiz? Like, I'm not asking if they're reprimanded or something like that, but will they, is there an opportunity for it to reopen so that they can?
Yes, we, we leave everything open.
Okay.
And so if they weren't able to, to get to it, they still can go back and revisit that. And how is Canvas, the system, the system works is where it, it will notify them if they're not, if something is missing. So they're just as a friendly reminder. But then when they do submit it, it actually does notify us as well to say, hey, so-and-so has completed such-and-such quiz.
Thank you. I'm very excited that this is finally up and going and just really excited for the district and for the staff to be able to dissipate in such a comprehensive learning opportunity. I appreciate all of the work and know Kenny was working on this a couple of years ago and, and I was kind of able to see a little bit of it, the foundation work. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Vidi?
Thank you, and I apologize for walking out a couple of times. I was just wondering what the difference, or if there's any, in terms of required professional development versus optional? Like, do instructors get to individualize this somehow, their professional development?
So all of our professional development is aligned to, through our moonshot. So everything is filtered through our office and we will make sure that it's aligned with everything from our strategic plan to our moonshot before it would be something that they could deliver.
And we do offer, or what do I want to say, maybe communicate about, or we are a channel, this office is a channel for communicating about optional learning as well. So right now, our work has been focused on that alignment piece. What do we want everyone to know and be able to do is job-embedded, aligned, and ongoing experiences. And then also, we still continue to amplify messages about, oh, the state is offering this thing or there's this opportunity for an English learner symposium or, right? So that is work that this team does as well. And I think over the next few years, building out what is job-embedded and what are those optional strands. Leadership development would be another example that is, is optional, but that's fully working right now through this office. So it is a yes, and there's more to do over the next couple of years in that space.
Is there anyone outside of, or is there anyone that does not have access to professional development that works for the district?
Our goal is to make sure that everybody in our district has opportunities for professional development as well as, even if I go, as well as our non-pubs, because our district also works with our non-pubs. So they have access to our professional offerings as well.
What is non, non-pub?
Oh, non-public schools like our archdiocese.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Some of my questions have been answered already, so I wanted to get an idea of when you are tracking the content from the student, the person who's taking the quizzes, have you guys been able to identify some trends from the staff? That's makes the department say, maybe we're doing this wrong or we're doing this really well? And like, I don't know, if it's tracking it that way, can it be used as an evaluation tool to later on decide what those quizzes look like? I got, I'll stop there.
So yes, with the content specifically in relation to like the quizzes, that is something that we look at. And if there is a question, let's say it's a reflection question, something about what are some, just gonna make something up, supports that you might need based on the content that they're learning and we're identifying a trend? That is something that we can definitely address to the groups that, that would be more relevant to that staff role or that staff group. But also, we work with research and assessment to provide feedback surveys. And it's, and it's usually typically the same kind of structure of that in order to provide another mechanism to get feedback from, from our staff.
I would add that I shared the articulation day example before we offer that course in Canvas and it's customizable. So we, we, all staff are going to be looking at student work on that day and they're going to have those transition conversations between fifth and sixth grade and between eighth and ninth. And there are templates there and there's guidance, there's sort of guardrails, but that are customizable to the school. And by looking at those agendas through office hours, supporting folks in designing that day, and then through those feedback surveys, we've been able to make improvements to articulation day just in terms of, for example, we heard from elementary school teachers that went to these feeder middles that they wanted a little bit different experience next year. And so then we're going to be able to get that messaging right, improve and ensure an experience more tailored to their needs in those transition conversations.
You answered a question that I...
One more thing in response to your question, how Alex talked about getting the feedback and how immediate you can utilize it. He shared the example from the principal institute last year, which is a four-day professional learning that's offered for principals. And we collected feedback each day, but then we looked at it each day and we were able to make immediate adjustments in what we were doing with the principals to support the learning and the need that they had requested in that feedback. And that's not always something where we were able to do in the past when we were just utilizing like surveys, outside surveys or from our research department. Those things take time to analyze that data and get back. But this provide, this tool provides us another option where we can get more immediate feedback to put into play right away.
One more thing, because you answered everything else, so that's awesome. How do we identify those external facilitators? And how do you become a part of that facilitator development network? Is it possible, something about student community engagement? How could the empowerment network put together a training and be able to provide it for our educators?
So I just want to be really clear. Right now, it's a closed ecosystem to the Omaha Public Schools. And so there, the facilitator development network is really working with those internal departments, bringing them all under this umbrella according to that timeline. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. When Chris is talking about, we may have a speaker or partner that comes to the principal institute. We may have their notes or something there, but at this time, it's a closed ecosystem.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Moon Street, you?
Thank you, Ms. Erdemriver. So I, I really appreciate the systematic approach and alignment. And as we went through, you answered a lot of my questions about kind of alignment toward what? And how we're, how we're kind of choosing and curating the content? I think there's still something kind of missing for me in, when I look at the, the flow of this, this handout about kind of how like the submission of a form, evaluation. And I guess my, maybe the first easy question here is who submits this form? Who are we talking about that would be?
So right now, like Chief Kramer said, it's internal groups. And so it's as we work with them. So we mentioned in, in the presentation that we've already worked with curriculum instruction support. And so they've submitted professional learning offerings through, to be evaluated against the guiding principles that we talked about. So has student community services. As we continue on that timeline, each group that you see on there that has, our office works with them, that's who would be submitting right now. And I like the term, internal, what'd you say, ecosystem, internal ecosystem, yeah.
So I, and maybe then kind of following up on that. So what's prompting them? Is it because you've reached out to them and said that you're the next group we want to work with on the stuff that we need you to get to our teachers?
Or? Or to all role groups, yeah.
Right. Okay, that, that helps me. I, it gets, as I read it, I was wondering if people were just coming up with ideas and submitting forms. It's kind of, you're, this is, this is starting from a point of we need this information from this group and...
Great.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful.
And we want to, as, as we're doing the facilitator development network, planning those long-term, that long-term planning, year one, year three, year five. And we get on that cycle of summer, fall, winter, then those submissions will come in. So Susan's team will, here's what, you know, we're thinking, this is the, the arc for the summer. We'll submit those offerings, work with them to get it built out in Canvas. We amplify the message, communicate, so on and so forth. And we've already made adjustments to that timeline, just as an example, the ERP system that the district is going to be bringing on board will require a significant amount of training for certain role groups, less for others. So we've moved up certain departments on that timeline to ensure that this infrastructure is ready so that that, when, when that ERP comes to pass, that we'll have this system ready and that training will all flow through this process.
On the, the guiding principles, transformative learning, and that's, I think, described pretty well here, what our focus is about making sure we've got the right impact. I just want to make sure I understand the change management. Is that about changing our, how we, how we move our staff through this process of changing the kind of learning and, and the focus of our learning, or is there something else there?
Yes, it would be shifting our thoughts sometimes, just change is always good. So sometimes shifting how we think about something and looking at it in other ways.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, is that, is the change management, change management about the content of the, of the...
Is the delivery more...
The delivery, okay, that's what I was...
Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, that's perfect. So, it's, it's really getting everybody used to this process?
Yes.
Structure, okay.
Well, I think too, just to add to that, it's also how as a facilitator, are you managing the change in the adult mindset about what they're learning? So, going from, I think, students learning this way as a teacher, but I know as a facilitator, I need to really press in on their reflection skills, on what they're seeing in the classroom and how students are taking in on that. And how am I helping to, and being intentional in my facilitation about helping change their mindset? So, it's a little bit of both.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that really covered with everybody else who's asked questions, I think that really covered everything that I had. Yes, I think I'm good. Thank you. This is great work.
Thank you, Mr. Street. Ms. Magnuson?
Thank you, President Erdnberger, and thank you very much. I love this. I have a lot of questions, mostly so I can like brag later on. So, regarding Canvas specifically, just for people who like struggle with technology, what type of support for that?
So, I provide a lot of asynchronous style training, so like documents, videos, you know, handouts. We are working with other partners and groups to provide that, kind of that in-person training for facilitators and stuff, especially when we are leading up to like a district professional learning day. That's a big, you know, district-wide professional learning opportunity. So, we might partner with other folks and provide, you know, like a teams, like an online-style, you know, training, a drop-in hours, office hours, things like that in order to support. But we are, we're hoping when we continue with this alignment, we are identifying kind of those, I want to say Uber users or power users within the district with each department to kind of assist in that, in that, that training to get people more comfortable with utilizing Canvas.
I'd like to add to that if I can. Can you hear me? Alex is a little modest too, but he has built a lot of templates. So, when you look at that flow chart and you see that we get the request or the submission, we're grabbing information so that he knows how to build the learning design. And then each one of those templates that he's built, there's a module that, module's just like a repository, that holds these how-to sheets that you don't have to publish. So, there's really kind of a benefit to going through this process, even more than just systematizing these that can help just in time learning for people developing.
You didn't brag, Alex. How will Canvas be like updated and maintained? Like keeping it engaging, right, and like user-friendly?
Oh, okay. I think the, I think in the learning designs, and that also goes back to kind of those Uber, power users, whatever we want to call them. Some of the, part of this alignment process is having those conversations with department leaders to identify these champions. And one of the big things that I think, I guess is on their docket is to be critical. And that might not be the right word, but to provide feedback on ways that we can not only continually enhance the learning, but also make sure that we're tailoring it to the, to the staff and to the role. And that does evolve as, you know, as we continue changing and iterating with these, with these learning designs. But another, another thought about just keeping relevant is also just keeping up to date with the tools. Canvas is constantly updating and adding features and tools. And that's kind of part of why I'm here, to make sure that I'm, you know, testing those and then going through the right channels and proper procedures to make sure that, you know, if I think this is what we think, this is something that could really enhance the learning experiences for our, for our staff, then we should try to implement it and integrate it.
I know you're good when you start answering my questions, because my next quest, my next question was about like feedback loops for like real-time improvements, like for the learning modules, like that. So, thank you for that. Regarding like the submission and approval process, how fast is like the typical turnaround? Do you know what that would be? Like, like submission to approval?
Right now, we're looking to get back to everybody within 10. You're looking at the office? It's a, it's, it's a tall order, but I don't think it's any more than what we're asking any English teacher in the district. So, we're willing to.
And you're also, you're getting how many at a time? You're not getting like one at a time?
No, it's like...
Right now, you're getting?
First submission was forty.
Forty-four submissions. So, it's not taking than ten to fifteen days to look at one?
Right.
I completely understand. No. Around the equity piece, how are we ensuring just, you know, cultural relevance and inclusiveness? I know we are. I'm just asking the how piece. I can explain. Nobody's gonna ask.
I'm, I'm missing part of the question. How do we ensure cultural relevance?
Just, you know, like cultural relevance, even, especially when Nick was talking about the change management piece, and we're talking about the delivery and things like that. It's constantly in my mind. And so, I was just wondering, and if, you know, you need time to think, I understand that too, we can follow up. It's just a question. I know somebody's gonna ask me too, so.
I invite my...
As far as like the content, right? The content that's being provided?
Yeah, I invite my colleagues to jump in too, but there are built-in mechanisms in Canvas to help, like if folks have disabilities or something like that, maybe I'm not answering the right question.
No. Right. Like cultural relevance. Inclusiveness now, for sure.
Yeah, so one of our, one of our guiding principles is equity. And so, that when we, for example, go through the facilitator development network, we spend, just I would say is a better word, we invest some time thinking about what are the inclusive practices that we use to include and make sure like everyone's voice is heard, make sure we're bringing people to the learning, just the same as we would practice, have equity practices in our classrooms.
And first of all, you all are gonna kick me off the table. Sorry. Also, a part of the reason that I think the team adopted these guiding principles as guardrails was to be able to ensure all staff that are facilitating professional learning understand what needs to be included for our staff to be able to take it and implement it. And part of that is making it relevant to the students and the other staff that they're working with. And so, there has been intention around how are we addressing inclusivity, cultural responsiveness, maybe not in those specific words, but how are we making sure that what staff are learning is reflective of the students and the staff they're working with and their schools? Not a one-size, going away from a one-size-fits-all model to what do we need to do in this professional learning to address the needs in your classroom of your students, your families, your communities? And so, that has been addressed in the facilitator development network that this team has been rolling out throughout. So, it's, you're not gonna see it specifically called out here, but it is embedded in the learning they're doing with the facilitator.
Then just, I guess, big picture. We know that professional learning leads to change and outcomes. Is there some sort of like formal like evaluation systems, like assess that? That will look like?
So, so Alex mentioned the Qualtrics. We, we, our partnership with the research and do the surveys and those are built in, looking for continuous improvement for each of, each of the offerings that we, that we engage.
And just to add, the way in which learning should be a part of the plan-do-check-act cycle within continuous improvement is a really important step of this, where the learning that a teacher or a para or whomever, a leader, may receive, then what is the structure or system by which we're investigating whether that's being implemented in that plan-do-check-act cycle? And so, that's part of a coherent professional learning system. And the, when the principal supervisors came here and shared about our ESTs and our SSTs, that's a structure where we know that these teachers have received this professional learning. This has been what the building is focused on in terms of their professional learning, which is aligned. And so, then through those classroom visits, through looking at the Elliot, those types of things, are then those behaviors or practices living in the classroom? We're also, in our, in our work with, with some schools through our K2 structured literacy, looking at artifacts that are coming from the professional learning. So, if teachers are engaging in a planning protocol or looking at student work that they learned about in this professional learning, what are we seeing from those, that, those plans, that student work? And how is that living in that cycle of improvement in our schools? And so, it's all connected and we're getting a lot better at ensuring those structures are talking to one another.
Only two more, I promise. Will we as a board then be able to get like regular updates or reports showing like participation rates, feedback scores, tax, social learning?
I'm not sure about all of the specifics, but the analytics are available inside of the Canvas and Canvas catalog. So, we, we can know how many staff, for example, engaged, between six thousand that one day. We didn't always have access to that right away until we actually took like sign-in sheets and then handcrafted them. So, it's a big step forward in terms of what we're able to do, whatever questions you might.
Thank you. And actually, that was my last question.
You're done? Thank you. For now. Ms. Magnuson?
Thank you, President Erdnberger. And thank you for this presentation. I'm very familiar with this mode of professional learning, so I'm excited to see that it's coming to OPS. And some of my questions have been answered already. I wanted to know about a feedback loop, a feedback loop, and I was happy to hear that this sounds really agile in terms of, you know, what Dr. Chisholm was talking about with like, you know, the principal, four-day principal continuous development. So, I was excited to hear that. And I'm sorry if this has already been addressed, but is there, do you have like a rotation schedule in mind for these offerings to change in addition to being adjusted in an agile manner?
Yeah, yes. So, we mentioned that we're setting up almost what is akin to terms with spring, fall, and then summer learning. Said that completely backwards. Summer, then fall, then spring. Yeah, so, but, but some of that transcends those time periods. So, like we mentioned at Principal Institute, they may want to go back to it. So, we would leave that open until they register. We had this conversation the other day, because we're coming up on registration for next year. We don't want to confuse staff either. And so, then we would, we would archive that course so that they're registered, they don't see two, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five and get confused. So, there are some things that we can do behind the scenes to keep clarity and moving forward and updating.
Thank you. Another question I have is for professional development that might need some hands-on experience to master, for example, de-escalation strategies. Is there any sort of mentorship component, like a debriefing that can happen after an event in a classroom or anything like that to help, help an educator improve in their own response?
It's nice that you mentioned de-escalation. That was one of our sessions in February. And yes, that was provided by our school staff in our school buildings as it was developed in collaboration, it being the professional learning was developed in collaboration from Student Community Services, School Improvement, I think CIS. But they all worked together with a team and created this professional learning experience. They trained folks to go out and deliver that in, on the school, in the school buildings. But we utilized Canvas to help communicate a consistent message that would be received. And then there are features inside of Canvas that allows for interaction. So, that one, I believe this was true of how you set up the discussion board, where you could be in two different buildings. If you're in the same course, you could be discussing concepts or content across buildings, depending on how we set up the courses.
Great. Thank you. And my last question is, when we're looking at, you know, how to submit professional learning and you're receiving submissions from, you know, curriculum groups and things, can you maybe share with us an example of an approved submission versus one that is denied based on these guiding principles?
Sure. We're just now receiving the first round, so there hasn't been a whole lot of approval and denial. But the way we're, the way we're evaluating, you notice that there's an evaluation portion on that, on that graphic. We look at the, the principles, the guiding principles, as well as connection to moonshot and then an emerging arc of learning that Chief Kramer mentioned, like what are we expecting to learn throughout the next one, three and five years as we get to the moonshot? And we're looking for specific alignments to the, any one, all of those pieces, actually, as we review them.
And I just, I think the engagement that we're doing with each department around that one, three and five-year kind of learning plan, what do we want everyone in this role group to be able to do by year five? So, then what does that look like year three? And then what's the most immediate learning that they need? We should be then anticipating what those submissions are going to be because we have this kind of path that, that is governing where it's going. The team has also planned for sort of annual check-ins. Once we do this initial lift of bringing all departments under this umbrella, having these longer-term arcs of learning, then annually, we will, maybe biannually have check-ins to, okay, where are we, what are we seeing in implementation? What's the learning shifts that we need to make for next year and that sort of thing? And so, my hope is that there won't be surprises because we've done this deep collaborative work on the front end in alignment with our moonshot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magnuson. Mrs. Krackey, do you have any questions?
When you were identifying professional learning, I'm assuming that it takes university hours into consideration and student teachers and committees that teachers are serving on. And then there's the hours of things that you took for professional learning. It seems to me you had to have twelve of these every single, what was it, semester or, how, how is that working right now? Can you tell me how many professional hours you need in a year? Whether you're a professional and you have all your masters and everything, you have to keep taking things to add on to that as you're doing it. You may be way overdone with your professional learning because you're doing so many things. But what is the minimum amount for a teacher to take?
I believe that's a, a rule, I think rule ten is where you'd find that. In my mind, it goes to six hours. I could be wrong.
I think it's ten.
Is it ten?
Ten, yes.
So, it's ten per teacher, but we do far surpass that with the...
You said ten? Just ten?
Ten.
That isn't very many, is it?
No.
Or maybe is, it consists of something different than what I understand? Can you tell us what it would look like? If you had a chart there, what would be some things that you would count toward professional learning?
So, there is the, the requirement from the state around professional learning. Our job embedded opportunities across the year surpass what's required when we think about the opportunities at the beginning of the year, curriculum days, district professional learning days and other offerings. And so, the requirement of the state is ten hours, but within our calendar during their working hours, we offer more opportunities than ten hours for all of our teachers.
And then it, is there something else that would be on the list that I didn't mention? For which you would be getting professional hours?
I think as you mentioned, we have educators are learners, right? And so, we have many folks who may be working on a master's degree or may be participating. Latasha offers through a program that she runs. We pay for some credit hours for courses that teachers want to take. that teachers want to take up to nine hours, right? So our district offers a lot of opportunities for folks to continue their learning, and we really work toward job embeddedness as much as possible.
And then I know that one of the districts around us pays for some of the college work or classes. Do we do that also now? They're looking like we do.
We do.
That's great. That's the best thing that you've said tonight, really, for teachers, really.
Just as Mrs. Kramer just mentioned, we do offer for our, it's called our accelerated learning, teaching learning, and then we give all of our teachers an opportunity to get up to nine graduate credit hours in any subject area of their choice. So if I'm an art teacher and I really, really, really need to dive into this pottery because I'm not really good at it, and I want to get more education on it, then I could take a class in pottery if I chose to.
Good. That's great.
So we're just trying to grow our individuals in our buildings or in our district.
And then I also was thinking about a teacher who just came in in January, how does she leap into the professional learning that we already gave that she wanted to take if she had been here? You know what I mean?
Yes. We are actually working on, like she said, a long-range plan that we can, it's embedded so that it would be offered at another time. So if we offer them the same classroom management, in October, we're going to revisit classroom management again. So when that teacher comes in, then they'll be able to go into that professional learning opportunity.
Because there's lots of value there for the new teachers when they're coming in too. And even those who are first-year teachers, some of them probably are taking an abundance of things because they're all excited about everything. We would hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Krackey. Mrs. Snipes?
I'm going back. I know that Indiana had asked a question, but I don't, I was kind of in my own notes looking at my question, so I didn't hear it. But then this is available to all staff then?
Right. This is available to all staff, certificated as well as classified staff.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to butt in just for a second because I'm following up on that. Okay. That's something I've been sort of trying to get my head around. So all staff includes everybody in the buildings and everybody here at TAC.
And I think we need to use will be because...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
For example, we will be engaging with Charles's transportation team, with Nutrition Services on ensuring all of that training is migrated, but that hasn't happened yet. So that's why this timeline that you see in front of you kind of parses out how that engagement will happen. So at this very moment, that's not how Nutrition Services workers are receiving their training, but our hope is to bring all of us under this umbrella over the next few years.
Okay. And just sort of an extension of that, let's pretend, I didn't quite, and this is an elaboration on the question that Mr. Tealyn asked about who is submitting these professional learnings. At this point in time, you have a timeline in mind and you're calling up Charles's people and say, okay, it's your turn to come up with something to develop. If I'm in Nutrition Services and I'm seeing some behaviors in the cafeteria or whatever, I mean, I'm still trying to struggle with what the program would be, can I initiate? And I think that's what Mr. Tealyn was asking. Can I initiate a, I know that you don't have Nutrition Services down for a couple of years, but can we submit something now to share with everybody? Or is it going to be based on? And both of them are good answers. I'm just curious.
So I think that, again, the long-range planning will play a role here, and I would say that some of that has already begun happening. So for example, the de-escalation support that we offered on the District Professional Learning Day this last year was something that folks had been asking for. And so we were responsive to that need, tailoring it to our continuous improvement and strategic plans, and then engaging and collaborating with other departments to deliver that. So I think that is possible, and we already have examples of that beginning to move in that direction.
Thank you. Mr. Tealyn has another question, which will probably mean that I have more questions.
Thank you, Ms. Erdnberger. So I think I've been able to pinpoint the question I was trying to ask before, and I think a lot of us are interested in there's, you've taken the initiative to really bring alignment to structure and delivery. Separately, though, there is this alignment of content, right? And I think maybe the first question is, what is, what is the state of the long-term plan at this point? How far are you along in development?
So I would say over the last two years, we've had alignment of content in terms of principal learning and then the instructional leadership teams in building, which is our EILN and SILN and Assistant Principals and some of that work, where here is the learning for the principals of this year and so for this year. And so then the other groups that engage in learning with us are connected to that arc and then also getting more connected K-12. And so we continue to deepen that. And just for an example, last week, we did some thinking about if this is the critical learning, for example, for all K2 teachers or all secondary teachers over the next four years, and these are the critical, this is the critical learning, then how does that overlap with principal learning and so forth? And then what should then that long-range plan look like? So that's already in motion. We've had that kind of level of alignment for a year or two, and we're continuing to deepen that work.
That's very helpful. I think, you know, from our perspective, I think one of our jobs is to make sure that this alignment is happening. You've taken the initiative and done a lot of this work, which is fantastic. I think if we were to have another presentation on this, I think one thing that would be helpful for us in our role is to really understand how your, what that long-range plan is so that we can match up that alignment that you're telling us you have, and I'm sure that you do, but we can match up that idea to the content that you're delivering. Does that make sense?
Yes. And even beyond what is the learning for this role group and then those implementation and continuous improvement cycles, that the understanding that every person in the Omaha Public Schools knows their role in the moonshot, I think will be an essential component of that. And this work is really integral to role clarity alongside critical behaviors and learning and so forth.
Fantastic. That'll be exciting to hear more about. Thank you.
I'm about to give up my crown of person who asks most questions because Ms. Snipes has another one.
She's shaming me. So then I guess, thank you so much, by the way. So then the question I just asked then, is that what this is on here when I look at the timeline, when it has the new online catalog process begins? That's where those are being inserted then. And then for where it says like continual updates from feedback, even though it's not in the next column, that's something that still just like continues onward. The guiding principles, which I appreciate, what's the, I mean, how do you make sure, I guess, or, you know, keep people accountable for making sure that all the offerings really follow those guiding principles?
That's probably where you come in for the submission. So when they submit, then we're making sure that they're aligned with the guided principles and everything in the learning design that we offer.
Mrs. Krackey?
I'm going to ask a question that many teachers would be asking. Where is the support, just, I would think that would be an ongoing program or offering throughout the year with different little gimmicks to it. Teachers would love that. But I don't know where it is. Where is it?
So we, on February 14th, we had de-escalation, and I just want to reiterate that it was not just teachers, it was all staff. So that was your Nutrition Services, that was your custodial staff, all staff were introduced to de-escalation. Well, we will revisit de-escalation again at the beginning of the school year, and then we'll revisit it again second semester.
But there's a lot more to it than de-escalation. So I'm thinking, Chris, do we have a class on that or what?
So you're right. There's always opportunity to learn how to become better at classroom management, to become better at building relationships in the classroom, to getting, setting up that learning, that culture for learning. Those, and there's some of them that are really small and pay big dividends. Those types of things, we will be able to add into the catalog that Alex shared so that if I'm, this is down the road just a little bit, but if I'm struggling and I want another idea for how to establish relationships, there can be a tile inside of the Canvas catalog that I could access as a teacher.
Right.
That will be coming.
And I would say...
And then if we're storing some of these, and people can go to them later.
And I think some of that already lives in our new teacher development, which Latasha can talk about in a minute, through mentorship and ongoing professional learning for year one and year two. And then we also, Danielle Starkey, who oversees our MTSSB framework, that is built into that long-term learning plan for principals. So at every single principal meeting, we have learning about MTSSB systems, and then principals then are the lead learners in their buildings, leading their MTSS team and so forth. And so that, that you just described, already lives in some places. And a next step is to get that to be that just-in-time snackable information. If I want to learn more about this procedure or routine or whatever, that's a next step for that department.
I remember the classes that we did have, similar to what I'm talking about, they were full when people registered. They came. They needed it or wanted it. It was helpful.
Two questions. One is just because I'm confused. I'm looking at the listings on page 13, and it says there's a capacity of 25, 20. I don't know what that means because it struck me that capacity is infinite. So what is, what is that 25 referring to?
So for that experience in particular, those were being housed in a building, in classrooms. So they have a certain amount of space. And so they were registering through that system, but the experience was in person. And so they were, they were at multiple schools, and there was multiple rooms. And so they got to pick and choose the time, the school, in the room, but we had to set capacity limits just because of the space that was provided.
So does that get captured onto the programs? You can access it on Canvas later, or is that a standalone presentation? That's what I'm confused about.
So the registration side, which is, which was those tiles, so that's just for them to register. The learning experience side will remain. So they have kind of two, kind of two things that they gain after they register. They gain another, I guess, access to another site that will house all of the experience, all the learning, all the materials and resources. But this experience in particular for instructional coaching was an in-person, but we wanted to still utilize the registration system just because folks were getting familiar with it. We also wanted to capture that registration data.
I think, I think my question is, when these 25 people show up and they have a really kick-ass instructional coaching experience, is somebody standing there with a video camera so it also turns into something that can be accessed later? Or is this a separate undertaking?
So the content that they would have received lives for that particular piece ongoing in the principal learning for the year? So the content lives on, perhaps the videotaping of the experience, as you suggest, doesn't, but the content they receive does.
Okay. And I have one, to me anyways, relatively substantive question, and that is, if these programs or whatever you want to call them are expected to be accessed by, as you mentioned, 6,000 employees or however many the big number is, I was looking at the paraprofessional examples that you were showing, and it occurs to me that not everybody that works for OPS has the same level of education in the first place. And that some of the program, I mean, I'm just wondering how you accommodate for, I'm thinking of some of the guys that were part of our maintenance program up at North High who had only been in the country for a couple of months. Reading through that is not going to work. So I guess my question is, how do you, or is that something that your department is on your timeline farther now? I'm just wondering how you're tackling that.
In as many ways as we can, right? So to start with, paraprofessionals is a good example. The access through devices was an issue a couple of years ago. Understandings of how to utilize online pieces for registration has been more of a challenge in the past, but through the work of this office, even before I got here, they started working in small doses. And so like the first step might be, we just want to register. Second step might be, we want to register and have one online interactive experience during our time together. And you just keep building over time with that experience.
But it's all in English, for example.
We can put it in any language, any language that we can type, so it depends on who's delivering.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Last chance, everybody. Mr. Smith?
Make sure that I'm comprehending correctly. So if there is a building leadership workshop that I wanted to participate in, and it's going to be a lot of principals in there, and I am a physical education teacher, do I still have access to that training and go through, take the quizzes, or is it really position-specific?
I think it's learning-specific. So we have learning opportunities that cut across roles. So folks may be a curriculum supervisor, a teacher, a principal might register for a learning opportunity, and then they continue to have access to that content. I think in the case of improvement days that Latasha built, that was pushed out and communicated in a role-specific way for that day. But certainly there are learning opportunities that cut across, and through the registration and enrollment sort of process, we can make that accessible.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear you say. Because, so now when you're looking at the equity, you're looking at the inclusion. I may be a physical education teacher right now, but we're looking at 135. My third year, I may be an assistant principal on my way into the next track. That's what you said. Thank you.
Excellent question. Eye contact with everybody else, okay? Miss Bull, are you sure you don't have a question?
No. Just thank you for this presentation and this whole kind of revamp of the professional development for our staff. You know, I've heard from at least our teachers that professional development is definitely , so I think this is definitely going to be a very, and best of luck with the rest of the rollout.
Thank you very much, and good luck with your one-person department over there. Nope. Okay. So they're reviewing the submissions too? Okay. Fair enough. Okay. Thank you very, very much. Really appreciate everybody's time on this Monday afternoon evening. Thank you. Oh, do I have to say something? President Erdnberger. Let the record reflect that the board workshop adjourned at 7:25. Thank you.